Wow, you could talk to women in person.
I will.
I still don't have an answer for them.
They're here in Vermont now.
Yeah.
So...
It's been very confusing to communicate.
I'm sorry, Dave.
First thing.
We've got 10 seconds. I mean, today is the what? Eight?
What's today?
Nine.
No, today is the night. Passed due on my...
Yeah, and they're gonna talk about it tomorrow night, so might as well just give it up now.
Hi, Jeff.
How are you?
Are we all?
Dump something on my...
We're all in our places. We're bright, shining faces. I said...
I'm not smiling.
No, you're not. But your hair looks...
I did. Months ago and then...
When?
I have hat hair. I was wearing a hard hat all day today in the woods.
Oh, you were in the woods. Were you cutting down?
A view, so...
Oh, you cut...
Creating a view. I had no idea. With all that I do out in the woods, why I need like this opportunity 30 years ago. I just didn't see it. And then Cassie and I were sitting up there, "The sun's coming in so gloriously."
Did we ask Lori?
I realized, we can't... We don't have a view. If we got a view, if we get our firewood from this section over here, we'll have a view. And we'll leave the white bird chirps in the room.
I mean, we got...
You even did something creative.
Yeah, but I was playing art.
I do realize, so I thought I missed something. The reason I...
I mean, we had talked about it.
Previously is it was so wet.
I thought I missed it, that's why.
This weather, wet turns into ice.
That information.
Information.
So once you got a bog or something, huh?
Uh, right. Just a natural runoff. And the narrative be sent us here.
So where I grew up... They had a lot of peat bogs. And that's really something. Walk around and you're bouncy, bouncy.
Right.
If you were Irish, you'd know there's cars that eat and people eat out.
My mother... I mean, so more so, I mean, important groups. My mother had identified this virus. And identified an area that said, "I feel more important groups." She had no tree. She said, "You and I..."
No, 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 no.
"...are going to create a peat farm."
Yeah, that was...
2,000 for the...
We just didn't make any decisions about...
It was you in a wheelchair out there, come on.
You're 80 years old. I don't think you're gonna do a lot.
She wasn't 80, but...
You ever think of yours?
It being 6 o'clock, to call this special meeting for the select board to order, all present on the counter floor. There is no scheduled public participation. We are here to discuss the 25, 26 town budget. Just a manager.
Okay. Kind of the one specific department that we really hadn't discussed. I mean, I went through it previously, is economic development. Page... 32. Excuse me?
I can't get the...
Our fingers are coldness.
And then they will... I'm almost there.
So as you could see, with the economic development director's salary put in what we had for others. We did, I did an analysis of what economic development directors are typically paid for. Paid for municipalities of this size. And again, it's not economic development directors for nonprofits that are not connected with a municipality. It's, again, in-house economic development directors. It was a little tough to do a little bit of a comparison because they have different titles with different departments. But for example, in Bennington, it was Bennington, they have a person called Community Development Director, but it's essentially the same type of position. Now, that person's been there eight years and their salary now is up to, I think, $79,000. But when that person started, you know, he started at 60. Then down in, whatever town, it was another town. Actually, they had a person called an Economic Development Director. And that person was in the low 70s. And then I looked at positions in Montpelier, the city that had kind of similar things. And generally, it's in that range. And again, this is, you know, kind of like a planning person within municipalities. And you can go to Burlington, I mean, they have, you know, Economic Development Director, but that's the director of CDO, Community Development. And that person oversees probably 30 people. So that salary's over 100. But again, four municipalities that I looked at where it was an in-house Economic Development Director, you know, it was anywhere from 60,000 to 80,000. So I think what's in there for, again, this municipality and the type of things, you know, the expectation, that's generally in the range of what I had found.
Yeah, right in the middle.
Yep. You know, other than that, as you can see, there's not a lot to that budget. Primarily, you know, 90% of the budget is salary and benefits. Down below, not much in way of costs related to administration. Tom and I have sat down with the budget. I think he's talked, met with you over the years, the year, a couple of times have talked about what he's up to. But Tom, you know, felt this was reasonable to the overall number. Think like any employee, they all look a little bit more. But I think it's, again, confident in saying that that salary is very much comparable to what Tom does as compared to other municipalities. Question?
I'd like you to supply to the board a list of those you just gave.
Sure.
We gave specifically Bennington, but the other four, the other three?
Yep, okay.
Just so I have it for my consumption. Could you add Waterbury to that list, please?
Yeah, so I mean, it's a little different. It's not an in-house person, but sure, we can...
I believe there is an in-house person.
He's paid by the town.
With a title of...
Economic Director.
I thought it was Community Development.
No, there's another one that's also paid by a nonprofit. So if you could just do a little more exploration as it relates to Waterbury, that would be helpful.
Sure, absolutely.
Yeah, I looked that up.
And Randolph is another town that comes to mind that is comparable to us that I didn't hear you mention. So why don't you get that also for us? I'm not disagreeing with what you...
Oh, sure.
Your number is, but it's always nice to know what others are doing.
Sure, oh yeah.
Well, it's also good to know if we're getting our bang for a buck. Are you, could you live without the Economic Development Director?
I mean, you always can, but I think it, I found it to be very helpful. To team up on a lot of the grants. It's been very helpful for me. Tom does a lot of the research. And then, you know, some of the cases, a lot of the cases, he does write those grants. Again, there's grants we work on. And, you know, there's other things that are... They have a community development and economic development component, but it crosses over a little bit. That it, Tom's been very helpful, special projects. So it's very helpful to the manager to have that position. And it's also getting a little carried... It's also been great for me to, you know, bounce ideas off Tom, you know, just in general, you know, about things. Because Tom's worldly and...
Sounding boards are good.
Yep, so again, from doing grants, working on projects together, plus sounding board has been extremely helpful and enjoyable.
The relationship with business people in town, I think, is really important as well. And having somebody who can call.
Yep.
And a person they can talk to and they can help direct them, that's enormously...
Yeah, yeah, I mean, and I do get those from time to time. And if it's a quick one, I'll answer them. But yeah, I'm probably 85 to 90% of those calls I get. I just don't automatically refer them to Tom.
Well, considering what he's done for this town, I'd hate to lose it. Or the position.
Certainly the position. I think a lot has to do with timing, but I do think that Tom's brought a lot of experience and ability to perform for the town. Obviously, his last report to us was very impressive. And I certainly would not like to see this position eliminated. Took us a long while to get where we are. And I think it brings, in my personal opinion, a level Northfield needs. Someone came up to me the other day that said, "I'm so happy to see Northfield getting the development it deserves." And that was a profound statement, because I'd listened to her and I said, "Huh, that's interesting." And it is. It's nice to see the, you know, development of downtown with the rehab of the train station park. Depending for the apartments and the growth of businesses on East Street that's prior to Tom's arrival. It all is, we're creating momentum, which I think is very critical.
You know, and Charlie raises too. I think especially over the next couple of years... Well, it's been this way the last three years, but especially, well, I mean, the last three years and maybe a couple more years, you know, towns are seeing an enormous amount of grant opportunities. It's the most I've ever seen in my 30 years.
That's what I say, timing is good too. Because there's been so much opportunity for that. We'll see what happens.
Yeah, so, but I see the grant steam stream continuing for the next couple of years. Who knows after? So again, based on that anticipated stream of income and grant funds, you know, I think the position continues to be important and relevant.
So from a funding perspective, now this budget funding, so where are we at with the funding? Because I knew ARPA funded this position to a point, but where are we at now with that?
So with this year, Lori, was it still a third?
It currently is all... All gone, the past year.
So this current budget that we're approving is gonna be fully funded. Is that correct?
Yeah, because there's no more ARPA funds. They don't exist anymore.
Right, exactly. Very good. I just want a confirmation. I'll piggyback off what Lydia's remarks was. I think it's important to have somebody available for businesses and potential businesses and potential, even residents of the community to contact somebody and also to provide a confidential area in the municipal building where the Economic Development Officer can conduct business privately. And I know that some of us have asked for that to happen. So I just hope that we find it within the budget or let us know if there's modifications that need to happen to create a space where there is privacy.
Yeah, I think that's critical for development. People need to feel like they can brainstorm freely.
Yeah, I mean, that opportunity's there a few days a week, but yeah, we're working on a plan to make it. So it's the entire time, but again, there is that opportunity.
So you are working on a plan?
Yes, yep.
I mean, in general, too, the municipal conference room, if there's somebody next door at the same time, it's not just about confidentiality. It's like disruptive if you can. Like, there could be some improvements that would benefit more than just the Economic Development Office. That would provide...
Because we meet...
Quiet workspace more, yeah.
Yeah, and that opens, you know, that's not a good plan.
No.
It can be solved simply.
Yeah, why don't we just add pretend walls, right?
Yeah, I mean, enough so that they actually do something about the sound.
Yeah.
Right.
Otherwise, it's just a visual.
Herman Miller has a solution for that.
Yes, they do, Don.
I'm trying to get you.
Herman Miller, manufacturer of office equipment and space management. Is that correct, Charlie?
They can offer products that will accomplish what you want.
Exactly. Anything else on this? What's next?
So as we discussed, we have prepared a draft of the changes that we have, the board has approved and we've incorporated, or we plan to incorporate into the budget. So here is that list. If we look at, first at the revenues.
Yeah, that's a good way to start. So these are the changes that are, that have been proposed, not approved.
Well, I think...
Proposed.
Well, okay.
We haven't improved the budget, have we?
Okay, well, yeah, it's just, it appeared there was strong consensus.
No, exactly.
It just means we haven't, we're not ready to present this budget to the voters, yeah.
Right, oh yeah. I wasn't at that point.
Not that there's contention about these particular decisions.
Thank you for that clarification.
So the first was town clerk fees. We initially put in 35. As the board looked at it, and looked at past spending and felt that that makes sense to drop that down. So we dropped that down to 30,000. Next up is pool lessons. The board had talked about free lessons for those in town. So that would be the corresponding drop in anticipated revenue. Interest, based again on what interest revenue the municipalities received, particularly last year and the year before, we increased it up a bit from 30 to 40. Revenue in CIP, added at 35. Felt that be, may be appropriate just to match the other. You know, again, you know, not to be tried here, but you know, it's a guess on...
It's a moving target.
Yep. So those, the revenue items. I don't know if we want to talk those out or add any others.
So 4392 swim lessons were dropping from 2900...
I made my notes here.
To 500.
Yep.
Gotcha. All right, that's clear. Revenue, we're bumping up 10,000. For what? Let's see. 40,000, I wrote that down already. See that game just...
So is the VLCT stuff here updated from what Chris Laurie was receiving more info?
Yeah, so with insurance, they, the league submits to us paperwork. And the end of, the beginning of November, the middle, we fill out the package, we send it to them.
Yep.
So they make changes based on that. Plus, they do make internal change to their process regardless of us. And that affects the town. And then we get the bill. Unfortunately, we don't get the bill till January 1st. So it's somewhat of a guessing game. So now, we have gotten the bill. Unfortunately, there were some increases and a lot of it pertained to increases in workers' comp and just how they calculate things. So it did result in an increase there. It was 12 in workers' comp. But again, it's more of a calculation. So obviously, we had to make an adjustment for that.
And then you just, VLCT goes on the calendar year. So all in those six months, we won't know the following. So I do put in a 4% to 5% increase on such a general bill.
What's the reason for the increase? Experience rate or...
Uh-oh.
I knew it. Jeff, I told you to pay the bill.
Thanks, Charlie. Well, the owl is cute in the dark.
Certainly reminds me of my grandmother's house. She had two owls in her fireplace.
Okay, there we are, we got real ones?
No, but glass-eyed ones. So when the fire was on and there were no lights in the room.
Oh, I see it.
Used to scare the heck out of me.
Scared the hell out of me, you know, growing up. Yeah?
So is it our experience rate that caused the increase or...
Not so much. I mean, there was a little bit related to that, but not much. But again, my understanding, was it just a new way to calculate? Was that the thing?
Well, workers' comp was the experience.
Yeah, but not all of the...
But the others, well, and some of the rates changed, you know.
Or...
Highway, I think highway went up, but water went down. It was the individual rate. So each category has their own billing rate. Then there's the overall experience mod. Then there are some discounts, two different discounts that we received. And then the rest of property boiler, auto liability, police crime, employment law, and professional liability. Professional liability went up in the police, especially. Ambulance and fire not as much, but the police liability, a couple thousand.
So it's safe to say we had no major workers' compensation claims that reflected this?
Right, it was, they looked back to a couple minor ones, but some of it was just the... Again, we've been, it's been going, fortunately, it's steady.
Right, it has been going down, hasn't it?
Yeah.
Also, when you increase wages, you get...
Corresponding.
You got a corresponding increase in the workers' comp.
Good point.
For that part, I already had in the budget from, because I calculate all the benefits on whatever wage I put into the budget, so... Zero, start with zero.
Some fire department.
Police department. Oh, no, you're right.
Fire department, the board recommended some increase in the recertification. We actually hadn't increased it, but I think rightfully so. The board suggested increasing in addition to 2,000. Police department increased to a flat, five officers. You can see the $32,400 increase there. Ambulance personnel, we had added dollar to the wages for paramedic, because there's not that many paramedics and it was less than we thought. Catch-based and cleaning, felt that we'd be appropriate adding funds in there because it'd likely be an interdepartmental charge. Tree removal, added 4,000. Special events personnel benefits, changed that. Added 11,20. Oh, sensible. Moving on to the capital improvement plan, library roof, added 5,000. Highway, Water Street Bridge, basically kind of shifted 5,000 to the foot bridge on Vine Street and added 1,000 for 6,000. Capital equipment, the pool, added 1,000 for guiding boards. And then the highway truck, which we had to replace. We ended up having, after the trade-in, enough to pay for the actual truck, but we were short on the plow. So we had to add in 9,600. So it goes to the...
Explain that one to me again.
Which one, the truck?
The truck.
Yeah, so we had to replace, replace the truck that performed in.
Yeah, yep.
And we got a price of 47,000, but there was a 7,000 trade-in. So it matched...
What we done did.
Yeah, but unfortunately, didn't cover the plow.
So we're adding that to a budget that's occurring. So is the purchase occurring in July?
Oh, no, it's current, it's in...
Why are we adding it now?
Because we are short.
We're short bridges.
Almost 10,000, yeah. We had, we had not put any money into the 25, 26 budget.
So there was zero in CI, in CIP?
So there was zero set aside for 25, 26.
Yeah. Got it, understood.
So all of those items, increase the tax rate increase to 11 cents. And then the estimated overall increase is a 9%, 10.3% increase in the budget. So those are, again, the changes that we saw as they're being consensus.
So I know we have, I mean, go ahead.
Yeah, so the other thing what we need to do, it won't affect the budget, and I talked about it briefly when we started the budget process. We just have to come up with how we're going to incorporate the ARPA funds that came in and the corresponding projects. Lori and I are working on that. As I said, I envisioned it being, you know, up in the revenues. It would just show other expenses coming in. And that creates a surplus. And then we would list those specific projects that the board has approved, sidewalks and those type of things. And then, so it would clearly show that way. And also too, I am working on a report that will be a part of the interim report to really explain the whole ARPA process and how it all transformed and all of that. So that'll clearly explain to the public, two-year process, you know, the amount that came over projects and, you know, create lots of transparency. So we're still working on that. Again, I don't envision that at all affecting the bottom line here in terms of the tax rate and the estimated increase, because there's those funds to support those projects. Just a little twist on that. There was 35,000 that the board kind of left hanging there in the ARPA funds that didn't actually end up... I mean, it got transferred over, but it didn't have a tag or a project. A project tagged to it. So what we're thinking of is just, you know, listing that as surplus and then either just listing it as surplus, but probably doing what we normally do is to tag that surplus spending to a specific project. So again, beginning, again, it's not gonna affect the bottom line. It's just pure accounting.
Are you gonna make a suggestion of what project to...
Well, you already have tagged the project, you know.
The 35?
Oh, oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Are you gonna make a suggestion? Okay, if not, I'm like, I know bridges, we've been chronically...
Yeah, if you wanted to tag it to them, then...
Well, there's two, so... It's 36,586, because when I was looking at the list, 2,000, we initially had said swimming lessons. But now we're not doing charging for swimming lessons.
Oh, so that's...
So that gets added, that'll get added back to that unplanned money. So there's 36,000. So you could either, as you, you could either put it toward doing more bridge work or, which then would change the increase in the budget or decrease. Or we could use that, find something to, in the existing budget.
Yep.
Use that to bring the increase down.
Yep. That might depend on what other decisions we make to this budget.
That is true.
And I'm going to segue into that comment. What is the timeline now?
Well, again, you still have to the end of the month. So you still have a couple of weeks. So, you know, you'd have, we just pull up the calendar, so. So I mean, you know, you have your regular board meeting next week and then you'd have 16th and 21st. So there's clearly, clearly plenty of time to pull this together. You really don't.
Pull what together?
The final budget.
Okay, but.
You have till the end, the end.
No, I understand that, but I guess you're missing my point. The timeline you're going to come back, are you going to come back with the recommendation?
Yeah, yeah.
So will we have it at next week's meeting or will we have it thereafter?
More likely if we have a meeting, an additional meeting, be the next.
Well, that's what I'm trying to establish. Is there a need for an additional budget meeting? I cringe seeing that.
Well, I think we should plan on an additional one on the same.
You got to plan on additional two or three?
No.
I'm into it, this is fun. Charlie. Oh, yeah. Charlie.
Budget novice is in my favorite time.
I miss Frankenstein.
Isn't there a time?
I know what you mean.
You're dating yourself there.
Is it the right time to ask about the grant matching potential? We were talking about whether those would go to the economic development fund. And that was the interest rather than the.
Or a part of.
Or it could be part of the.
35.
Yeah, but I think original, we had talked for a while about the interest potentially being.
And we were targeting 200,000 or about.
Right. I think the interest is only 136.
Well, I could, I don't have the December number with me. It's 13424, so November 30th.
Okay, yeah.
So 130.
So we can if you had the 30, you're.
Right, if we don't need that for. But then the question is just whether the economic development fund is the right place to put what we'd want to use for grant matching. I assume some of the grants the town might go for wouldn't necessarily be economic development. You know, it'd be something, I mean, many things, like even sidewalks, you could tie loosely to economic development, but I don't know. Something like one of the roads grants or something, whether, you know, garnment or.
It does make a lot, it does make a lot of sense to put it in a fund that is earmarked for matching. Do we feel confident that we're going to get the, get the grants to spend the money? Because I hate like heck to see that money stay in.
Sit around.
I do, again, at least for the next, what I'm seeing is state level for the next year and a half, two years. But, you know, God knows.
Dude, that, any money that's excess in the federal government is either going to be buying Greenland or the Panama Canal. That's where we're at.
Always grants, though, I mean.
Yeah.
Well, realistically, I remember applying for grants for bridges and stuff and we just never got it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, you know, like, you know, you never know what the federal government's going to do, but I think they have, and the new administration will still have enough sense to realize they're going to have to provide. No, seriously, they're.
I just say one thing. Guys, 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 I think, I think what you have to understand is that there's this long delay between what they say in Washington and what happens.
So you see my point.
So it might happen, you might be right, but he's also right.
Bridges and they're still going to have to.
Yeah. My only point is let's not tie our hands too tight with the.
Well, yeah, we could put a smaller amount too, that we feel, if we feel more.
And just.
But you still have.
The way I foresee that interest number will grow because the money that was obligated under federal definition of obligated is staying in the ARPA, a separate ARPA fund.
Yeah.
And, and I transfer the money as we spend the bills, so as we pay bills. So, you know, like Vine Street, that money.
I mean, the state of Vermont.
So that interest number will continue to grow somewhat over the net. Not as quickly because I'm going to transfer a lot of the money out, but.
So the state of Vermont too, through good times and bad times. My 20s, 25 more years in Vermont in local government, good times or bad. State of Vermont has always provided agency transportation grants, again, for sidewalks.
Which our town needs desperately.
But also, you know, structures grant, like we got a grant for the Stony Brook Bridge for 220,000 and there was a match for that. So those grants will always be there.
I think that's wise to do.
Yeah, it's just.
Always be there.
At the state level.
On the 9th of January.
Charlie's getting ready to try.
On the, at least at the state level, because it's, you know, like.
I should, I just did a Y2K.
Do you have a recommendation on whether putting it in the economic development fund versus like a grant matching specific? What is your perspective?
Well, honestly.
Yeah.
I'm not sure we want to do anything yet. The, you know, we're, we're working at 10%, just under 10% this year, 10% last year. I guess there may be other things that the board feels, you know, in the next budget that they want to use some of that funding for other than.
So you're saying leaving it there is.
I, I'm not, it's just, I don't know that we need to make the decision before, for this budget year.
Yeah, if we were going to put some aside, is, what method do you think is the best for putting it aside for grant matching?
I will say we have an economic development reserve already approved.
Yeah.
We do not have, which is simply, you know, an article on warning.
Yeah.
I don't mean simply, but.
Yes.
It would be a discussion.
Yeah.
And need to be approved by the public if we were to create a new reserve that were some sort of grant match, which, which we can do.
Yeah.
Once the, once those reserves are created, you can put funds in at any time through the budget process. And you can spend them on the intended use. If you want to spend them or transfer them to some other project, that's when you need to go back to the public for approval.
Yep.
So I think, yeah, I think it makes sense more of a generic line item to sort of, you know, gives flexibility for all type of grants. You never know what's going to come up over time. The state and the feds change their grant focus, you know, some for a while will be transportation, you know, then it'll be clean water, so.
Are you both saying the opposite thing then? Or are you saying just a line rather than a, a fund? Like something that does, or are you suggesting we should put an article and start a new reserve fund?
Either way, but I mean, I'm just talking about the title of it.
Yeah, he's just saying.
Economic Development.
Yeah.
As I said, just more of a generic, non-specific economic development.
I believe in letting the voters reserve it. It just prevents future boards or future managers from spending it. And if you need to use it for something else to reduce the tax rate or to paint the town pink, you just go to the voters and say, we want to use this money for this, and if they endorse it, you're good to go.
Yeah, but, I mean, mid-year, you know, you got a grant opportunity where it's in question as to how it was tied to that reserve fund.
Say that again?
Yeah, so I guess mid-year, you know, if you have a great opportunity to use it on a grant, then some could question whether that's what the original intent was.
So we're saying a separate fund?
Yeah.
But isn't that what Charlie's saying too? He's just saying he wants.
A reserve fund. Shall the voters in Northfield authorize the town in Northfield to develop a reserve fund for the purpose of matching grants?
Oh, that's fine.
Funding matching grants, great.
Yeah.
That makes sense.
And that's why I said more of a generic initially.
Right, you're not going to say, you know.
I mean, I'd just like to point out that if we were paying for the Wall Street project, for example, ourselves, we'd be looking at how to pay for the $600,000. And because we were able to use those funds to get a grant, the project is going to cost us significantly less. So I really just think at least some amount, it doesn't have to be the whole thing. I think it'd be a good idea to, to get in the habit of having some funds that are set aside for grants on a regular basis.
It's a perfect opportunity.
And we have a chance right now.
Was it an 80/20 for there?
That was 80/20, a lot of the federal ones, a lot of them in general are 80/20.
So the larger highway sidewalk type, those are, the larger ones that are federally direct federal dollars are 80/20, but the state's AOT smaller highway and sidewalk projects are 50/50. Like the Main Street sidewalk.
So either way, it's, it's beneficial. You gotta have the money there.
Yeah, and if we don't have the money, then we have to put it in all of a sudden.
I think it's a very smart move.
Not to belabor.
I absolutely endorse the idea of having money for grants.
Not to belabor that, but over the last six, seven years, we've brought in a lot of grants, Stony Brook Bridge, Main Street Sidewalk, Vine Street, oh, not Vine Street, but Wall Street.
Well, you're training projects. You've had all kinds of projects that you've gotten grants for.
Yeah.
And there was.
Management, yeah.
And some of them are sort of, I don't know whether we want to call them extra, like the VORAC is not an essential, but a lot of these were things that we were responsible for, infrastructure that we needed to keep up with, like the Main Street sidewalk. So. Does anybody have a proposal of how much we set aside?
I've always thought 200, 200,000 was a good number.
We don't even have 200,000, so.
You asked me what I thought.
Okay.
So, I mean.
So go on the, the full 136 or whatever it is.
Unless management comes up with a, a suggestion.
And just again, keep in mind, so even if you set 130,000, next month, we're going to have more interest. So at some point, there'll be, at some point, when all of our ARPA funds end,
Yeah.
then there would be another, it'll be a much smaller number, but there'll be another interest number.
Right, and if we make this decision now, that other bit of interest could be used somewhere else. That's correct.
Right, you can put it in, you create a new reserve, you can just transfer in the reserve and.
Yeah.
Whatever budget season that is.
Yeah.
Or use it some other way.
Yeah.
I packed it as hard as I could because it's not going to go away. It's going to grow if you don't use it. And if you need it for something other, you go to the voters. So they got, we reserve it so the manager can't use it for anything. So the manager can't use it for anything else, sorry.
No, I don't.
Or, or, or a different board with different priorities.
I was going to say the same thing.
Yeah, I like it for that reason.
He said it earlier, he just forgot.
Just a reminder, there's also 44,000 still in the economic development. The development reserve from the 100,000 that we set aside.
Every time you turn.
You just keep finding those little piles of money, okay?
We should just remind Tom too, in case he has ideas that that money is there.
So speaking of economic development, we had been presented a project for whether we were going to endorse the idea of a nonprofit.
Hold on, are we going to make a decision though on this before we move on? I thought we just did, did we?
On the grant?
On a grant matching fund, putting it.
I, I have not opposed to putting the entire balance into a grant matching fund.
So that number was 130?
136 or 134.
Plus another.
130,400. But I'll update it with the December interest, I'll give you Jeff's number.
And then we got the other 35,000, right?
Yeah, although I do, if they have suggested things where you're like, oh, this would really help the budget if we use this here.
To the board.
Yeah.
Do you need a motion?
No. Is that what you're asking? We don't need a motion, I just was trying to make sure, I don't think.
Consensus, no, it's not.
So what do you think about putting that other 35,000 in?
Well, I was just saying that I'm getting the impression that it might help us because we're right, we're hovering close to that 10% spot here, that we might want that in case we need it.
Well, that's why I said unless management comes up with proposals.
Yeah.
And that's why we're not going to vote on budget tonight.
Yeah, we would strongly oppose.
What?
We'd strongly oppose you, but would not want you to adopt it.
Yeah.
Again, the other.
So wanted that takeaway then, if, for the 35,000, if you have recommendations to the board, let's, let's hear them before the next budget meeting.
Yep.
And then the general consensus is that we want to put aside the interests for.
At least, yeah.
I think we've had a very consistent support of that
Yep.
throughout our whole deliberation.
Just making sure that we're all on the same page. And then I'll let Charlie go.
At least.
No, don't.
At least.
No, which is, before, which is fine, but are there any other specifics related to the budget tonight that we may have overlooked in our reassessment of the list we got from management tonight? I know there was some talk about training and I believe Charlie brought this up at the last meeting in regards to the ambulance crew. Are we comfortable with the funding level, we're, we're supporting it? And my notes that.
I don't, did they have a specific, they didn't have a specific.
The notes I had was they need more training money.
Yeah.
Own time, it costs $11,000.
Well, that was kind of interesting too, I think.
$625 per course, $2,000 per course be an advanced EMT. Those are the notes that I, that I wrote.
I mean, it was a little bit, little bit mixed because I, at one point I had heard something about, you know, folks for paramedic costs and I don't see this municipality being in position to, to fund too many folks to become paramedics. But I do agree with, you know, having folks at those lower levels, like you'd said, the AMT and those type of things. So the lower level courses are a lot more manageable.
What about just adding 1,000 to it? So it's 7,000, which would match the actual from 22, 23? I think if I'm on the right, I use my ruler.
Nope.
Yeah, I'm on the right.
What page are you on?
Training pay? No, I'm on the wrong line.
Yeah, I was going to.
Whereas it's not training pay, it's training.
725 line item.
I'm on the wrong page, thanks, David.
Okay, there is all training.
725.
And so we've.
Right here.
We've added two grand already.
So we did have 6,000.
Yeah, so I'm still right, I just was looking at the wrong line.
Exactly, no, that's how I was surprised.
There's a 6,000 adding a thousand, although they haven't, in the past, they weren't using it.
No.
So.
That's.
That's, that's right management. You know, we, Megan did ask for some inquiries, so we did, but none.
Yeah. And then the other one they had asked for that I don't think we addressed was the on-call pay. I think, did they ask for going from $3 to $5? And we didn't, is that $3 now? I wondered if we could put them in the middle.
I can write that down. The notes.
I don't know what, if we have a sense of what's normal in other communities for that rate.
Speak up, Jeff.
Yeah, I, I'm not familiar with that, I.
For some reason, I did not write that. Well, let's phrase it another way. It's your opinion that we're in a good spot right now for on-call?
Yes, yeah, we've gone from. Yes, yeah. We've gone from now to paying and, um.
Because previously we didn't at all.
Right, right.
I just know we haven't, you know, out of their requests, we're not, um, we're not meeting them, which.
It's part of the budget process.
It is.
We're making priorities.
You know, I think obviously the big one was the hourly wage and
Yeah.
the folks increased it quite a bit last year and there's a modest increase this year, but again, based on the comparison to other municipalities, you found that it was kind of right in the middle. So there is an increase.
Jeff, you did it. You had me put that to 350, which is, so there was, we didn't.
Okay, so we did do a small.
Yeah.
I was wondering the difference from the years. Okay.
Run that by me once.
We adjusted.
We increased it to 350.
What line?
On-call pay.
It's, uh, it doesn't have a number. It's under standby, under 509 because it's like a sub item.
Page 15.
Yeah, page 15.
Got it, see it.
Thanks, Laurie.
So 350, yeah.
So we can say that that was.
So what's the total on that line item now?
That's the 30,000.
No, we we, the draft budget that was given to you included
Yes.
a 50 cent increase.
Yeah.
All right.
So the number is still there.
Why, why 43,000?
Um, probably because if we had done what they were hoping, it would have increased the budget by 17,000. Almost doesn't quite get you to 43, but.
All right, so it it is a statement included in there.
I just wanted to make sure we actually discussed it because we listened, but we didn't.
I know, we did.
Yeah, and we hadn't discussed it at all, so.
Charles, you're on. Proposal. What are we gonna do with it? Economic Development is asking a nonprofit. Nonprofit, I floated the idea that if we are really considering that, we should, we don't have the property to develop low-income housing, which is what my understanding this would go for. And by the way, low-income housing at $1,200 a month is what the price was quoted, exceeds minimum paid. So you don't, you're not gonna, minimum wage, you're gonna be spending 60% of minimum wage on housing for low-income housing. That dog does not. But in addition, we don't have any real estate in Northfield that is, uh, public. So it seems to me that if we're going to go down this path to establish a nonprofit for the purpose of housing, that we should have sign on by the property owners who would be developing it. I haven't seen anything, uh, that we've taken a pulse to see that, so. Is much.
Is this a budget item?
It, that's a good question. I don't think.
Otherwise, it's not worn.
Exactly. So I was gonna bring that up. I think that, um, we could certainly add it to our meeting on Tuesday and we could have the Economic Development Officer present for that, for a discussion.
I'm down with that.
So why don't we do that? And then he can make a formal presentation to the board, um, and then we bird dog it and then. Did he get a copy of the email that I sent out about the things I was talking about? Did not.
No.
Which one? It may have been just a rant to the board members. Was that when you were, you were saying what you just?
Right.
I'm not sure if he was on that or not. I don't remember if I sent it to you even, but point being, Jeff, when you talk to, uh, for the next meeting, Tom should come to us. I'm going to be asking what private property owner is interested in developing low-income housing from the Northfield Falls to, uh, South Village. That's where our utilities are. Sewer doesn't go that far. So inside the sewer district, are there any developable properties that the property owner is interested in but needs to have a nonprofit to accomplish? Won't it come out? If he doesn't have that answer, I think you can all figure out how, where I'm gonna put my support. So we'll have that on our next regular meeting coming up Tuesday, which John and I and Jeff will be meeting tomorrow about. Isn't that correct?
Yeah.
Well, I can't meet you at 8 o'clock, but I could meet you later.
Oh, good.
My day's half, my day's half, half over at 8 o'clock.
You sound like my dad. He used to say things like that.
My father did too.
They must have gone to the dad school.
Either that or a marine.
Were you saying something about the library?
Yeah, we haven't talked about the library. Very good, John. Thank you for that mishap.
We talked, the library rule this on here.
That's not what we're talking about. We're talking about the monthly payment to the library.
Oh, yes.
I think we reviewed it and we have, nobody had any, uh.
Yeah, we talked.
You were on the, on the.
I was on the agenda.
Yeah, you were.
And you spoke.
All right, I need to refresh what we had. So let's go to, uh, what page?
24.
24.
I wrote kudos to you.
You did.
About the youth.
Yeah, I I now I recall we did discuss this.
We're good.
Yeah.
24, 25, 108,500?
Yes. Is there some?
And we talked about the increase for the director and the youth librarian.
Mm-hmm.
And we all were supportive of that. Uh, was there anything you wanted us to notice or, uh?
No, I just didn't see it on the list here.
Got it. Oh.
The increase. The increase.
It's because it was already, already in, because we didn't make any changes to it.
We didn't change it.
John, the, the, the issue I think that you're thinking about was last year's budget, the year we're in right now, 24, 25.
Yes.
Just accidentally, for the prior year, had the wrong number.
Yes.
But the, the current, the year that you're asking for, 25, 26, you asked for 112,000 and that's what we put in the budget.
Okay.
So it's not on the change sheet because there's no change to the.
Ah, okay.
Understood.
So you made the adjustment.
It was just a.
Understood. The 23, 24 budget and actual numbers were skewed, I think, to convert it, but. So that's why the 24, 25 number was 108,500 off to the side.
So then following up on that, then this estimated tax increase at the bottom here of the page you ended out today, that's that's the estimated tax increase. Everything included.
Not school, but just all municipalities.
That we have just, that we have discussed.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, okay.
It started at 8.8?
No, I spoke with 7 something.
7. And we have gotten to 9.3.
Yeah, right. And like you said, we are dancing right underneath that 10.
Which is just a number.
Mm-hmm, but I don't know, it's been psychologically very important.
It is, and they got 35,000 dollars, you might be able to come up with and say, we can do this one. They reduce.
Yeah, I know. It's not a nice shit.
So that'll drop it.
Politically, I think that might be a very good thing.
Yeah, and that wouldn't.
Should they do?
Where did we end up last year was, last year was 8? 8.
Just under 9?
8.
I think you were 8.7.
Yeah, it was.
Just under 9.
Close to 9. It was like the 99 cent kinda deal.
Well, I'll pull my files. I don't know.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it was just under 9.
Yeah.
This is, you know, um, I watched some comments on Facebook, I shouldn't be saying this, but about our budget process and I've been encouraged in my last two letters to the, to the newspaper during, to participate in this process.
Yes.
And the only person that shows up on a consistent basis is our sixth select board member.
And Sue's too.
Yeah, but Sue is here too.
Sue comes a lot too.
No, physically in the room.
Oh.
And then Sue has been to a lot and so has, um.
She's great, yeah.
So I'm not. I guess what I'm saying is, there was another comment saying there's really not a lot to cut. We have such basic services in this town that we have to provide. There's not a lot of that. Somebody may disagree with that, but I think we operate a pretty good budget. An unrelated question, if someone dials, uses the phone dial-in, do they show up on the screen?
The number does.
It does, all right. I figured it made the.
Good question. We were 8.9 last year, by the way.
Is there any public participate, well, further discussion from the board? Before we get off the budget. Go to public participation. Okay. Uh, is there anyone, um, that would like to participate in public participation on schedule? Either online or in the room. Yes, sir.
Good question. When did we start, when did we start buying tandem dump trucks?
Tandem dump trucks?
Yeah.
The first one was at the turn of the century.
Yeah. When Rob Lewis was the manager.
Charlie Morse was the manager.
Was he?
Yes, he was.
Okay. And my question there is how many extra hours would we use for a snowstorm? If we use the tandem, if we use a standard two-wheel, uh, six-wheel dump truck versus using a tandem?
What's the difference in treating the roads with a single axle dump truck rather than a double axle dump truck?
Yeah. And I estimate for two, for a snowstorm, that you can end up with about four hours of extra road time by using a single axle dump truck versus a tandem.
Why?
Because you would end up having to make an extra trip back to the sand bed to reload the truck by the tandem, but be able to continue a trip without.
Difference between 16 yards and 8 yards of material.
And, uh, so.
The current trucks can't.
My feeling on that is that I think it's about $75,000 difference between the fully set up tandem dump truck versus a single axle dump truck. And so take four hours for a snowstorm extra. We probably average about 12 major storms a year. It's about 48 to 50 hours of extra travel time. And is that, is it worth the extra $75,000 to, you know, to, to eliminate that 48 hours? I don't see how it can be. And on the tandem, of course, you've got four extra tires, two extra sets of chains. You're getting six, maybe six, seven miles to the gallon with fuel. And with the single axle, you're gonna run about 10, maybe 12. You've got your fuel consumption and you're cutting your budget, uh, or what you're spending. So that's something, just a thought, that, because we've had these roads from 1979, since 1976 to 2000 with single axle dump trucks.
When we had winters that were considerably heavier than what we have today.
Yes. And and we had, we had trucks that might have been a little bit smaller than what they are today and and we've got more trucks today than what we had then. Because when I came here, I believe we had three dump trucks. And a Grader and Baccal. So I feel, these are really, really, you have to go buy brand new. I really feel we should really evaluate it and think it through to see where is it wiser to spend the money? Is it wiser to spend 48 hours or 50 hours of overtime with employees or take $75,000 different sort of truck?
Well, that can be easily done. Well, Elroy and I had this conversation and, uh, as memory serves, one of our problems was getting the, uh, roads treated. So the school bus, uh, could make it to school on time and working public could make it off the from out the pucker brush to where we are now. So having a, uh, and a tandem truck doesn't always work. It's, there's places where it just, you, you don't wanna take it.
Right.
But, uh, for doing the big loops, it was, uh, it created a more of a efficiency when you're talking about the school bus routes than it was. But now we've got three, I think. And, you know, that point, uh, you know, how we ended up with three is because I presume the highway department thought that they were best, but that, that is an area that with today's data should be monitored all the time. Are we getting the most bang for our buck?
Particularly with the cost of these damn things.
Right, and it's, it's, it's what we have to do as a municipality to watch our pennies is to make sure that we are, uh, recognizing the $75,000 difference in a truck and, uh, the efficiency of a bigger truck worth a smaller truck. Then you got the wings, you know, and you've got, uh, you know, we also discussed about buying state trucks used. And, uh, I, buying used trucks was, well, I spoke clearly and honestly with openly just borrowing somebody else's problems that has never been on a dirt road or has got frames supposedly bent, but that can be argued back and forth.
I don't buy that argument.
So it's, it's a data point that is, should be part of our, uh, business practices with your management team to say, okay, this is what, uh, I don't, do we send the tandem up to Turkey Hill? We don't know.
I would say no.
I thought that that truck could.
You don't go all the way up. You can't tie the tandem all the way up. Up, up on top. So now you've got two trucks going up there and probably one's a 550.
Yeah, this, no, it's actually, you're right, the 550s go up, but the tandems don't go up there.
Yeah, so I mean, it's with, with today's businesses and today's cost and with today's technology, we should be able to honor those things. You can put an Apple tag on a truck and see, see what it's doing. It's.
Oh, no, the routes.
So one year, $86,000 increase from the state of Omaha.
Yep.
Their cost for the internationals, Elroy was telling me.
Yeah.
Gone from 196 to 286. And they're gonna go up.
So if you violate 210,000 versus, a single axle, 210 versus 286, that's a lot of money.
How much overtime is that? She knows.
None. Really no overtime because.
Well, you said it was.
I said if it could be overtime, sorry.
Can you hear?
What I'm saying is.
Can I hear that?
Yeah.
I see.
Well, no.
I see our town employees done, powered, cleaned up many, many days after snowstorm by 2, 2:30 in the afternoon. And they leave the garage at 3:30, 4:00. So if they use an extra hour on each snowstorm, on each trip, well, it's, it's still, it's still gonna balance out, that you're gonna save money.
As long as the efficiency's there and the, and the, and the roads are cleared, and that's the, the other question.
Well, there used to be.
Right.
With, with the single axle dump trucks, they were clean.
Yeah, and we, and we also have a larger rural population. There's been a lot of construction. Yeah, and we, and we also have a larger rural population. There's been a lot of construction out in town.
Yeah.
Yeah, twenty-five years is a lot.
But what's the.
You know, Bill McNamara didn't have to go to town. He could wait until the roads were, wow. Somebody who's. And that's, I think society today is totally different than it was twenty-five years ago. The expectations of the roads and sidewalks being cleared at this point. There's more people going to work today than there was twenty-five years ago.
At all times of the day.
Yeah, exactly.
I was talking to a teenager who's got three jobs. Trying to stay together. I mean, if he can't get to those jobs, he's not making money.
Yeah. Well, I thank you for bringing that to our attention.
It's a good data point.
So would you, you, that's pretty simple to solve to, to figure that one out.
And we talked about the school buses. For the number of times that we had the big snowstorms and if they had the whole school off and come in, come out, come in an hour later, it would not be benefit, it would not be a major issue.
That's right.
So it's.
That's out of our purview.
I realize that, but it's still, it's still our group to make sure the roads are good.
Yeah, a hundred percent.
But we also gotta keep track of how much money we're spending out of our tax money.
Yes, but these costs are getting out of sight.
Yeah.
As I said, the emergency vehicles are gonna be just unaffordable at one point.
On the, on the back of it.
Your population is getting older. Forty, forty. Let's see, it was, today it was eighteen, twenty-eight and forty, so forty percent of your population is old, is no longer working. That's an increase to forty percent of your population in Vermont. Is not working because they're old.
Yeah.
I heard that stat.
Yeah, that was in the governor's speech, which I didn't get at all, but I'm, I listened to it.
Well, thank you, Elroy. Is there anything else you wanted to bring to our attention?
I was gonna say on the back of the little notes, I gave her a couple of telephone numbers.
Oh, I know that man very well.
Oh, oh, very nice man.
He's an Irish guy and he's, and he used to live in Norbit.
Oh, yeah.
He used to be your neighbor.
Yep, him and he spent many hours in my house.
Yeah.
With my children.
He's an Irish guy. Good guy. May I motion to adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor?
Approve.
Say aye.
Aye.
Everybody says yea.
It's a little weird. It's like for the minute of the last time.
Ostating.
We're here.
We are now adjourned. Read is a good descriptor for it. I cannot read at eight o'clock tomorrow.
Good.
All right, now we're going to you.
Good.
When would, no, when would, I, let me, you know what, I don't want my phone, I'll.
We've got a meeting at ten with FEMA. So the time after eleven.
Thank you, Charlie.
You're welcome. Eleven thirty?
Perfect.
Eleven thirty? Okay, eleven thirty. One would be convenient for you, sir. Twelve thirty? One o'clock?
I don't know.
One o'clock's fine.
One o'clock is good. We're done. One o'clock. I'll be attending remotely.
At one o'clock? Okay, I'll send something.
Please, thank you. I'm sorry for the
No, not.
the little jiggle on my schedule tomorrow. Meals on Wheels tomorrow.
Um.
Whoopie.
I get everybody wins tomorrow. We got a second.
I do too, and we have been invited to bring somebody, so I invited my former tenant.
Everybody wins tomorrow?
Everybody wins tomorrow.
Yeah, Mary, I told, no, Mary, I told you I was involved in that.
Yeah, you told, yeah, it's the year.
Very rewarding. It was very rewarding.
Well, yeah, if you know anybody who should be doing it, they need to get going right now.
Elementary.